Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, please remain standing. After a few words, a moment of silence for Catherine Kay Leary. Kay passed away peacefully at home on Saturday, April 21st. She was 95. 1940 graduate of the Academy of St. Elizabeth in Convent Station, as we know well. She worked as a bookkeeper at Bailey Elder High School until she retired in 1987. That's 30 years ago that she retired. A lifelong resident of Madison, which I just found out that her first home was above Burrows &amp; Core Funeral Home. And she was forever giving back to the community. She was a member of the Volunteer Ambulance Squad, AARP Volunteer Tax Preparation, Friends of the Library, the Thursday Morning Club. She taught knitting at the senior center. She was dedicated to her church, St. Vincent Martyr, where she volunteered at the rectory and was a member of the Rosary Society. She found time to help us by serving on the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee from 2007. And it was my honor to appoint her as our town historian in 2012, which she served until her death. And as was stated in her obituary, Kay Leary was the epitome of elegance and grace, strength and dignity. Her faith and generosity of spirit brought her comfort throughout her life. Her loss is irreplaceable to anyone who knew her, and she'll remain always an example of how to truly live. And that certainly was Kay. And I heard a very interesting story as I was at the viewing earlier from her granddaughter, Dina, who said Kay often got compared with Barbara Bush, both by looks and by personality. Dina even said she was not surprised if Kay would have passed on Barbara Bush's when Barbara Bush died. But Kay did die on the day of Barbara Bush's funeral. And just as Barbara Bush was a grand old lady, a grand lady as First Lady, Kay Leary is a grand lady for Madison. So please let us take a moment to remember Kay, to thank her for doing so much for the town she loved. The funeral service is tomorrow, 10:00 a.m. at St. Vincent's. I may have a motion for the regular minutes of April 9, 2018.
I'll move.
Any discussion, corrections? All in favor? Welcome all. We have a few presentations in just a second. But as I was walking around downtown today, it hit me, it was great to see the white on the trees and realize there were blossoms and not wet snow. So it looks like spring is finally here. So it's been, on top of spring finally arriving, it looks like it was a very busy two weeks in between meetings. We had our annual meeting for the Chief Executive Council for Madison, was hosted by Drew University, where we were able to update our area executives, those who live or work in Madison. And also, we were able to welcome Allergan and Atlantic Health to the Executive Council. Excuse me. And as mentioned last meeting, our county freeholders held their regular meeting here in the chambers. This is part of their roadshow meetings that they do throughout the county. They do it rotation over a five-year period. They gave us a very nice proclamation. As soon as we can find it, we'll read some of the highlights of it. It's around here in the building somewhere, so we apologize on that. On Thursday, April 12th, I attended the Board of Public Utilities hearing in Parsippany. And this was to get feedback on the response and recovery after the storms. I thank BPU President Fierro Deliso and Commissioner and Mayor Mariana Holden for their efforts to get JCPenel to accept our offer to assist our neighbors in recovery. And I want to again thank Mayor Bruce Harris of Chatham Borough, who publicly thanked Madison, and I'll be reading something shortly about that. Last week, last Wednesday was supposed to be the Madison Avenue Challenge, and regretfully, the four inches of rain that we received on Monday, and the lack of sun on Tuesday, and until about midday Wednesday, left the field unplayable. But it was going to be a great event. Both teams are there, and a lot of families ready to watch but unable to play. And I want to thank DPW for everything they did to try to make that field playable, but there's only so much you can do. You can't change the weather. And also shortly, we're going to be hearing from King's Road School. We had the great Green Vision Forum at Drew University, sponsored by the Environmental Commission. And all the schools in Madison, along with Drew, presented ideas to support a greener environment. Thank all the council members that attended that, to listen to our great students. And all the adults in the room were impressed by the students' work, and so much so that it felt to be a great idea to have the schools come back and present. So kicking off will be King's Road shortly. And this past Saturday, speaking of spring, was the annual Little League Parade. The sun was shining, even if it felt like a Saturday in March, it was still a beautiful day, and over 600 children in the parade. It was a good reminder that all that wouldn't happen without the volunteers' dedicated leadership in both Little League and the softball league, and all the volunteer coaches that put their time in to make a great experience for our children. And then, I wrapped up the two weeks this afternoon in Parsippany again to roundtable with Governor Murphy. So he was in his effort to get feedback from all the mayors. This was a group of Morris County mayors, a very good dialogue going on, and he understands the challenges at the local level. So let me come down below and do a couple of presentations here. I have members of the DDC to come up here, and Michael Toronto. And why don't you bring your principal up here, too? Come on. See? So, as we know, we have a great tradition in Madison that celebrates its 20th anniversary this year, and that is May Day, when we all get together and clean up our downtown. And that will be happening a week from Saturday. But also part of this tradition is our T-shirt designing contest. And here is this year's winner, Michael. And let me... Michael, would you like to tell us a little bit about your picture?
Yes.
All right. Tell me how you designed this.
So I designed it because since I, so since I wanted to go to America, it got me this idea of, of like, so near, like, it got me this idea of where, like, where the clock is, and then where, so where, like, so basically, so where. So it just got me this idea. I just like to, I just like to come up with ideas.
Yep. Excellent. It was a great inspiration, and I see you have 1998 to 2018, showing the 20 years of May Day. So great job, Michael. So here you get your framed copy of your T-shirt, along with a little gift from the DDC, the Downtown Development Commission. But the best prize of all happens on Saturday, May 5th, when about 1,000 people will be wearing your artwork on their chests. So thank you for doing that. Well done. I have a surprise proclamation. Liz Osborne, you want to come on down for a second? So we surprise Liz with this every year, even if she makes up the agenda, we slip it in there later on. Because May 6th to May 12th is the Municipal Clerks Week. And here is Liz Osborne, the clerk for the borough of Madison, doing a great job in keeping all our residents informed. Ask a question, she has the answer. Since Liz could do this by memory at this point, I'll just do a couple of these wherethes. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas municipal clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerk continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation, educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings, and professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk, notably Elizabeth Osborne, and Patty McAluso, and Mary Macarello. Now, I, Robert H. Connolly, the mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby recognize the week of May 6th through May 12th as the Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend our appreciation to municipal clerk Elizabeth Osborne, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform, and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So Liz, thank you for all you do. So mark your calendars between May 6th and May 12th. Walk in the front door, take a quick left, that's the clerk's office, and say, "Thank And I have a resolution from the borough of Chatham. And this is special, and they would have been here to deliver it themselves, but we do a lot of shared services with Chatham, including sharing Mondays as our council meetings. So they are meeting as we speak right now. But this is a resolution thanking the borough of Madison for allowing its electric department to perform repairs in Chatham Borough to damage arising from the March 7, 2018 storm. Whereas Madison Borough and Chatham Borough have enjoyed partnership to share municipal services for over a century, starting with a joint meeting and sewage treatment plan. And whereas over the years, that partnership has expanded to include a wide variety of services, including construction department services, a joint municipal court, community health services, and information technology and management services. And this is something that came up with the governor this morning, the importance of shared services. And so we've had a great partnership with Chatham. Whereas the storm of March 7, 2018, left half of Chatham without power, and the utility responsible for providing the power, JCPenel, was unable to perform timely repairs. And whereas recognizing a lack of power was a major inconvenience, and in some cases a health hazard to Chatham residents, and also required schools to remain closed for multiple days, the borough of Madison generously offered to obtain permission from the Board of Public Utilities and JCPenel to supplement JCPenel's repair crews and perform repairs in Chatham. And whereas with the assistance of Assemblyman John Bramick, such permission was granted, and the Madison Electric Department did perform numerous repairs in the Chatham Borough, resulting in the power being restored to all Chatham residents sooner than would have occurred otherwise. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Chatham, acting on behalf of all residents of Chatham Borough, that we thank our partners in Chatham for generously offering the services of their electric department, and appreciate the work that was done. And be it further resolved that Madison's efforts not only reflect our partnership of more than a century, but also demonstrated the importance of that partnership and strengthen it. And be it further resolved that all Chatham Borough officials are authorized to cooperate Madison Borough in its efforts to seek permission to permanently perform all repairs in electrical system in Chatham Borough in emergencies. And so that's our quest to help JCPenel. So we're honored to have this from the borough of Chatham. And I'll put this over here. And let me call up King's Road School, our students, our principal.
Excuse us, everybody. We have a little surprise for the mayor tonight. It's not an easy thing to do.
Have my microphone stolen?
I know. I've been dying to do this for 10 years. Anyway, you know, Mayor Bob has probably given out about 200 proclamations. I think it's one of his favorite things to do at the council meetings. And you know what? We decided to turn the tables, okay, tonight. So we want everybody to know that on Wednesday morning, Bob is going to be presented with a very, very lovely achievement. And it's the 2018 Alumni Achievement Award. It's given by the Leadership Morris, the Morris County Chamber of Commerce. So we had this little proclamation made for you. Whereas one of 11 children, Robert Connolly, is a lifelong resident of Madison, where he and his wife Marjorie, TT, has also raised their two children. And whereas Vice President and Capital Project Director of the Madison Area YMCA, and past president of Chapter 17 of the Association of YMCA Professionals, Bob has worked at the YMCA since volunteering there in high school. And whereas, having served two terms on the Borough Council, Bob has been leading the borough of Madison as mayor since 2012, after being elected the first Democratic mayor in 20 years, and is now serving his second term as mayor. And I'm going to turn this next one over. Whereas, an innovative leader, Mayor Robert Connolly worked together with Steve Ruckowitz of Quest Diagnostics, and Dr. Vivian Bull of Drew University, as the founding chairs to form the Chief Executive Council in Madison, to promote stakeholder collaboration, corporate impact, and education leadership.
Whereas the Chief Executive Council of Madison was presented the award for innovation in governance by the state of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, recognizing exemplary local government program that provides innovative and practical approaches to solving municipal problems and concerns, and... Who's next? Do I keep going?
You forgot me?
You're so little behind.
Whereas Bob is devoted to numerous community and professional organizations, among which is membership for over 25 years in the Rotary Club of Madison, including service as a past president.
We saved the best for last, Ben.
Whereas the Leadership Morris Alumni Council of the Morris County Chamber of Commerce is saluting the accomplishments of Robert H. Connolly by honoring him with the 2018 Leadership Morris Alumni Achievement Award at the Good Morning Morris Breakfast on April
Now therefore, the governing body of the borough of Madison hereby extends sincere congratulations to Mayor Robert H. Connolly as recipient of the 2018 Leadership Morris Alumni Achievement Award, and recognizes his dedicated commitment to the community.
And one of the things on my list between now and Wednesday morning was to write a speech, so thank you. All right, with that, let's bring up the King's Road group to present their green vision. So you're all set? You want to introduce yourselves and then present your...
My name is Gibson Fisher, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Vithant Malik, and I'm in second grade.
My name is Ishan Malik, and I'm in fifth grade.
We are students at the King's Road School, and are excited to introduce to you our school's green video. The video answers two questions.
What actions can Madison take to be a greener town? And how can King's Road contribute to that change?
Please pay attention to the lyrics of the song, because the words explain some of our green activities at our school, and what we think Madison as a town can do to be green. All the ideas from the video are from the students of our school.
Thank you to Mr. Joe DiAgostino, who works in the Madison School District Technology Department for directing and running the video together. We hope you enjoy the videos and our videos.
That was great, and great to see it a second time. And thank you again for all your work and taking the time to come tonight. Kathy Coop, principal, I want to congratulate you on great students there. And Tom, since we'd love to have Central Avenue at one of the meetings coming up, so let me know. We've got one in three weeks and one at the end of May. So if you can fit in, that would be great. All right. Now we have to transition to some work here. But hopefully everyone will leave here. You're welcome to stay. But if you are leaving, be inspired by that video. If you see anything on the ground as you go out, please pick it up and clean it up, and take care of our town, and we'll see you on May Day. All right, we'll start with reports from committees. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we have National Immunization Week is April 21st through the 28th. The Health Department reminds everyone that vaccinations are recognized as one of the top 10 public health accomplishments of the 20th century. Our Health Department participates in vaccination programs for children as well as adults on a regular, ongoing basis for residents. Next, we have upcoming screenings for residents that include women's health, which will be Monday, May 7th, men's health on Monday, June 11th, and a comprehensive metabolic profile, blood analysis Thursdays, June 7th and 14th. Please call the Health Department at 973-593-3079 for information or appointments for these free programs. Next, we have investigations are ongoing regarding the recent cases of E. coli illness with romaine lettuce from Arizona as a possible source. Currently, this is considered to be a multi-state outbreak with 53 cases as of the 21st of this month, including seven in New Jersey. The following advice is given to consumers, unless the source of the product is known, consumers everywhere in the United States who have store-bought romaine lettuce at home, including pre-made salads and salad mixes containing chopped romaine lettuce, should not eat it and should throw it away, even if some of it has been eaten and no one has gotten sick. And finally, the recent food establishment activity, the Madison Bagel received its final health approval, and will officially be opening on this coming Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the engineering report. This is kind of important, because the borough of Madison has been noticed by Public Service Electric and Gas Company of a plan to advance the mill and overlay of Main Street using subcontractor Tilcon New York evenings from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. starting Monday, April 30th. This work will generally resurface half the roadway disturbed by the gas main and service replacements that have been going on. They'll also follow the Main Street paving with Green Avenue paving and several other local Madison streets affected by the utility construction, such as Del Barton Drive, Treadwell, Nordling Lane, Laurel, and Surrey Lane. During the second week in May, and upon completion of the milling work by Public Service, the borough of Madison will initiate repaving operations at Barnsdale, Winding Way, Keep Street, and King's Road. The 2018 road improvement construction will also start in May with Midwest Construction, beginning work on Greenwood Avenue, and Cefalyon Sons beginning work on Rosewood Drive, Crestwood Drive, and Kensington Road. The pre-construction meetings with these contractors will occur later this week, with possible construction starts the first week of May. In 2018, the sanitary sewer cleaning, video, and repair contracts will be advertised Thursday, and bids are scheduled to open on Thursday, May 24th at 10:00 a.m. From Public Works, who is always busy, especially with these last couple of months, the mechanics have been repairing everything that's kind of broken down, and they service and repaired police, electric, and DPW vehicles. The Parks Department has been preparing all the athletic fields for recreation activities. They perform general park maintenance, collect recycling, yard waste, and assisted with the... waste, and assisted with the storm cleanup. Removal and chipping of the storm debris around town, the Roads Department has been working on that. The Sewer Department has also been helping, but they have had to handle emergency flood issues due to the heavy rainstorm that we just had. They also investigated various residential sewer blockage calls that occurred right after that storm. I'd like to read a note from Ken Ware, who is Little League Vice President, I think he is.
Or President.
President, he is, okay. So he wrote to Ken O'Brien, who is supervisor, but this is for all DPW. "Once again, DPW came through for Madison Little League big time. I had my doubts that we would be able to pull off this weekend's events with the conditions of the fields during the week, but thanks to the efforts of your department, the high school was able to play on Dodge Saturday afternoon and we were able to host the Challenger Games on both Rosedale Fields on Sunday. Over 70 kids from the Challenger Division Little League Adaptive Program for physically and intellectually challenged kids had a great time thanks to your efforts and over 80 Little League coaches, players, and board members who made this a memorable day for everyone. But without the fields, this could never have happened. I and the rest of Madison Little League, thank you." So that's a great note from a resident. I wanted to talk a little bit about building in the construction department that is extremely busy. They're doing very, very good again this year. In fact, I think they're up like 26%. They have actually, they've already issued 373 permits. Last year, it was 400. So inspections performed. They're up to 1,935. Certificates of occupancy is 54. Payments processed, 457. Oprah requests is like 129. So we're doing very, very well. This is a very busy department and as the mayor noted before, we share those services with Chad and Borough. So they're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. And Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Payroll Department, the Payroll Department reviews, updates, and submits contributions that were made to the New Jersey Division of Pensions and Benefits quarterly, and they just submitted their first. And the Payroll Department is also continuing to work with the Borough Department Heads on refining the implementation of the Prime Point Payroll Management System. All employees now clock in and out to work with a biometric time clock, and this is an important internal control which helps the administration better manage the Borough's most expensive budget line item, the salaries. From the Chief Financial Officer, the Borough is a member of and insured by the Morris Joint Insurance Fund, also known as JIF. The JIF ensures the Borough for liability, vehicle, cybersecurity, employment insurance, and workers' compensation. Reducing workers' comp claims is important, and as such, the Borough has recently implemented a formal incident investigation report. The Borough also is in the process of developing a more robust cyber risk management program. Process includes implementing minimum technological proficiency standards and obtaining JIF certification. And the recent ransomware issues in Atlanta highlight the importance of strengthening our cybersecurity. But Stephen, it's very important because we're going to have a hearing on our municipal budget. And this budget process started in August when the administration met with the department heads, and then the council began reviewing the financial information way back in November. Since then, we've been discussing it periodically through January and February and introduced it in March at 10 separate council meetings. And all of these meetings were, of course, open to the public. If you are interested in learning more about the budget, I encourage you to visit the annual budget process page on Rosenet. So after the meetings and the presentations, the council introduced the official state budget on March 26th. The document was then advertised and has been available online and in the Clerk's office. By state statute, there must be a minimum of 28 days between the introduction and the hearing so that the public has ample time for review and comment. And this hearing will happen tonight. We welcome the public's input now or anytime throughout the budget process, and then we will vote after the hearing. This budget right now includes a small property tax increase on existing homes of less than 1%, $6.2 million in capital improvements and critical infrastructure, a small increase in appropriations of 1%, the continuation of the $1.5 million give back to electric customers, and this will appear as a dividend on your electric bill. So first of all, I would really like to thank our CFO for putting this together. I'd like to thank the Borough Administrator, the Mayor, and the council members for all participating. I think we've created a very transparent process. We've done a very prudent, fiscally responsible budget. We've provided funds for infrastructure. We keep the taxes low. We maintain all our services, and we maintain a AAA credit rating. So I am going to vote yes, and I hope everybody else on this council will vote yes tonight because it really is a good budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Beginning with the Police Department, the Madison Police Department recently received, we're going to be very precise here, $5,116.70 from Morris County Prosecutor's Office forfeiture fund account for seized assets by Madison officers for the year 2017. So we get a piece of the pie when they seize assets and sell them in the market. These funds are used only with the permission of the County Prosecutor's Office for items that help police agencies in the performance of their duties. Madison Officers will be teaching the Not Even Once curriculum to high school students starting in May. Not Even Once is a program designed to raise awareness and prevent drug usage specifically opiates by high school students. Its purpose is to provide realistic information to young adults so that they can make informed decisions about how to avoid using drugs. The program is three days of instruction that is in accordance with the high school curriculum standards of the state of New Jersey for providing education about drugs, alcohol, their effects, legal consideration, and prevention. From the Fire Department, volunteer firefighters Evan Webb, Brian Castano, and Mike Coyne completed a 20-hour firefighter's safety and survival class this past weekend at the Morris County Fire Academy. They learned self-rescue techniques and how to rescue a trapped firefighter in many different situations such as falling through a floor into a basement of a burning building. Tonight, members of the Fire Department are at the Morris County Fire Academy for live burn training. Firefighters will be challenged with different fire situations utilizing the academy's burned building. And finally, we have a repeat of a story that I was able to tell you all about several weeks ago. You may recall Teddy the Beagle, who lives on Maple Avenue, had the misfortune of falling in an underground well, but was heroically rescued by our Fire Department. That story is now being told in a magazine called Women's World, and it's in the Heroes in Uniform section of the April 16th edition. You can find us online. Makes for great reading. I read it this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Great to hear that. Community Affairs, Ms. Byrne.
Mayor, with the warm weather, the community garden has been planning for the 2018 season. Currently, they have four whole and one-half plots available. The honeybees are also back in full force. All six hives are being used. And from the DDC, I'm the Borough Director of Business Development. They are working on recreating the signage application to make it more user-friendly. There are 11 new businesses coming to town. Lisa Ellis has a list of possible replacements for any vacancies. The farmer's market opens Thursday, May 31st, and runs through Thursday, October 25th. The hours are 2:00 to 7:00, and Lisa is curating a great group of farmers and vendors. Also, the 2018 Home Expo will be held Saturday, April 25th, at the Madison Junior School. So if you have any renovation ideas, stop by and check out the Home Expo. Finally, Madison Chamber of Commerce is publishing 10,000 Madison pocket maps. These are maps of Madison that fold up, that are about this big when unfolded, but fold up about this big. So you can put it in your pocketbook, you can put it in your shirt pocket, and you'll never get lost. The Senior Center has been working on training in Community Pass, which is the program that allows online registration for senior activities. Renovation continues on the Senior Center. The floors should be installed soon. Lastly, there is one last trip before everyone heads out for the summer. Thursday, June 14th, the seniors will be going to Vinecrest Winery in Pennsylvania with a lunch at Quittstown Tavern. And yes, and wait, there's more, and a tour of Promise Made. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have to do a little research on that. And Utilities, Mr. Hoover.
How do you follow that? Let me start with the Water Department. Every week, the Water Department performs various state-mandated water testing, locates and marks underground utilities, and removes and installs meter. 20 this past week. So going forward, unless the changes, I'm not going to report that particular item anymore because I repeat it every week, every council meeting. It doesn't make sense. In addition, the department shuts down water mains for tie-ins. The department filled and flushed the new main on Central Avenue from Lorraine Road to Hoyt Street to connect services to the new eight-inch main, which was state-mandated. And the Electric Department, in addition to the usual markouts and house services, the department continues to perform post-storm work such as checking and tightening connections, fixing the points and installing piers and primary cables as well as cutting branches. The department has begun installing smart meters at the Kings Road and James Park substations, and approximately 14 post lights are planned to be installed for the KRE development. Kings Road will be excavated to install piers and conduits starting May 1st. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, now we move on to our budget hearing, and this is your opportunity, as Ms. Bailey pointed out, for you to make comments or ask questions related to the budget prior to the motion and approval of the budget. And we have our auditor, Mon Lee, here from Niveasatia, to answer any questions there. And we also have our CFO to answer any questions. So anyone wishing to comment or ask questions on the budget, please step forward. As I open the hearing, as usual, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard and keep your comments, if you can, to three minutes, but I'll ask you to stop at four. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close the hearing. And Resolution 132, 2018, resolution of the Borough of Madison finally adopting the 2018 budget and tax resolution.
Mayor, I move Resolution 132-2018.
I'll second.
The council discussion.
I would just like to second what Carmella said and compliment Jim. This is my first experience going through the entire budget from a council perspective, and it was probably the most transparent exercise that I've ever gone through. I mean, I really didn't know that much about it, but what Jim and Ray and everybody had taught me has been terrific, and it's been every step of the way. So I applaud you for not only that exercise, but also for doing this fabulous budget.
Ben.
Yes, I think it's worth mentioning that in the title, it says "finally adopting." That should not be construed as "finally adopting" as in our federal budget. This is a long process because it's complicated. There are a lot of different moving parts and because we also have to comply with state requirements on how the budget's presented. So it takes a long time from start to finish. But I will say, there are disagreements, but it's all in all a very amiable process, and indeed, it's as transparent as we can make it. So thank you all. Special thanks to our CFO.
Maureen, and I'll move over to the other side.
And I want to point out that this budget is why our tax increase is less than 1%. I mean, we worked and have been working over the years to contain costs. And, you know, some years are easier than others, but, you know, this year, I think we did a pretty good job of containing costs. Taxes will never go down. But if we can keep them in control, that's best for the community.
Thank you. Comments, any comments on this side? We covered it all, and I'd add comments, but after the proclamation, I'm speechless, so.
Finally. You know, this is my second year as backup at Finance, and it's really been great. I've been working with Austria and the CFO and with Ray Cody, but Austria's been absolutely great. She took this so seriously. And, you know, last year, we did charts. So she did charts so that we could all understand where she was coming from and whatever. It's really been a great, it's been a great experience, you know, working alongside of her these last two years. But I have to say, you know, thank you to Jim. This man worked so hard. He came in on Saturdays and he made sure that we knew every step that he was taking. And, you know, we appreciate that. You know, we appreciate all of that. And Ray, of course, you know, just working with us all the time. But I have to say that the department heads had a lot to do with this. They understood where we were coming from. They, you know, we said, okay, this is what we want. And they gave us a great deal of help. So I want to say thank you to all of them and to the employees that have worked hard to keep the services going in this wonderful town and the cost being down. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
No, but Carmella's right to thank the employees and the administration. I mean, you can't do it without them.
And it's been said, but I just want to, again, thank staff. As far as the presentation, I would challenge the 564 other municipalities to see if they have a better system of sharing it with the public. That challenge is out there now. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, congratulations. And tomorrow, we'll start 2019 budget. Any communications or petitions?
One email received dated today from resident Stephen McCann of Green Avenue regarding Resolution 26, 2008.
And that has been shared with the council and Stevens and tenants here. All right, this is our first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to agenda discussions and the resolutions that are on the consent agenda. We have a single agenda discussion, which is the Morris County Parks Commission Trails Grant Application. And I'll quickly go through the consent agenda so you can either know what it is for comment or also understand what is on the consent, as these will not be read out in detail later. Resolution 133 is a supporting letter of intent for a grant for the trail construction at the MRC. Resolution 134 is approval to Good Grief to run a 5K run at Gerald Farms on Sunday, June 3rd. Resolution 135 is awarding contract Resolution 135 is awarding contract to Henin Floors of Union of the amount of $27,862,000 at the Senior Center, as mentioned in the report. And this is, this money was made available through Ordinance 42217. Resolution 136, approving livery owner's license for Precise Limousine. And 137 is driver's permit, livery driver's permit for Carmen Farnaro of Precise Limousine. 138 is approving raffle license for the Baroque Orchestra of New Jersey. 139, temporary signs for the Madison Pool to go up during the month of May. 139, as I read it again, because I have them two in a row there. 140 is a resolution appointing Kevin Humes to position of substitute crossing guard. 141, appointing Stephen Dehaven as position of per diem dispatcher, and that is just to fill in and just paid on the days that he works. Resolution 142 is ratifying appointment of summer interns. 143, authorizing the police bike unity tour to raise awareness for fallen enforcement officers. They'll be riding through the Borough of Madison on May 9th, so put that on your calendar. It is a great sight and great to support those officers. Resolution 144 is authorizing a Sandy Hook bike ride to Washington, DC to raise awareness of gun violence, and that will be coming through Madison on May 5th. And there'll be a kickoff in Morristown also. Resolution 145 is confirming payment number two and change orders three and four to Joe Med Contracting Group for the Central Avenue water main replacement. And that is increased change orders of $10,000, which is 1.17% on the overall appropriation, which was appropriated in Ordinance 38, 2017. Resolution 146 is appointing Ronald Meyer, position of chief lineman. Resolution 147 is raffle license for the First Baptist Church of Madison. Resolution 148 is authorizing employee wellness program within Madison Area YMCA for employees. Resolution 149 is authorizing the Touch a Truck fundraiser by the Friends of the Madison Public Library that will occur at the library and the YMCA on July 28th. And Resolution 150 is resolution authorize execution of settlement and release agreement. So you can comment on any of those, and that you are aware of those for the consent agenda later. Anyone wishing to comment on any of those topics, please step forward, and there'll be another open period shortly for comments. Anyone wish to comment on those topics? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussions, Morris County Mission Trails Grant Application. Austria.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm asking the council to support the submission of this grant application. The Madison Recreation Center's master plan on the passive, what we call the passive part of the park, recommended a series of trails. And one of the trails was to create an ADA compliant trail, starting at the sidewalk along Ridgedale Avenue. The proposal is to create a paved walkway on either side of the road into the MRC, creating a short loop trail near the fields, then continuing the sidewalk up to the fields and the community garden. The walkway on the other side of the street would end at the parking lot where the deer enclosure park is, with a crosswalk to the field side. Years ago, when we made our application to the county to purchase the land, we stated in our application that we intended to create a number of trails, including an ADA compliant one for walkers with strollers or those who are handicapped. As you know, Cheshire Homes is right next to the MRC, and right now, they're using the road to get down into the MRC to watch games or just enjoy the sun. The loop trail, which is near the parking lot for the fields, is ideal for seniors, and this was one of the things the seniors said, that we really hadn't provided them with a safe trail. So working with the Land Conservancy of New Jersey, the Open Space Advisory Committee, we would like to submit this grant request to the county, and I'm just asking for support. It's, again, we would put in 20% if, and the county would make up the rest.
So 20 cents on the dollar, very good for us. Great partnership. Again, we thank the free holders for all the partnership with the support with our previous Trails grant, and this is a great.
Yeah, we just got, we just got one for Summer Hill Park, so we're on a roll, we hope.
Any comments or questions? Okay, that is, Resolution 133 on the consent, as I read through before. All right, now we're on to ordinances for hearing with the Borough Clerk. Please read the statement.
Okay, ordinance is scheduled for hearing, were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on Monday, April 9th, 2018. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up Ordinance 24-2018 and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 25 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Advisory Committee.
I open hearing for Ordinance 24. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 24-2018.
I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 24-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to our second invitation for discussion. This is one you may comment on anything, including ordinances are listed for introduction. Again, step forward, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you a one-minute grace, and we'll ask you to stop at four.
Stephen McCann, 184 Green Avenue. I've been a resident in Madison for over 30 years. I've been a builder in this town for about 20 years. I have three daughters. They're lifelong residents of Madison, as are my two grandchildren, and I think so much of this town that they are here as well. I must tell you that it's really a privilege to be in this town, and I don't think I've ever seen a council work as well as I've seen this particular council work together. And I sincerely mean that. I've seen a lot over the last several years, some of it on TV, and couldn't believe what I saw, and it really is a pleasure to see people that are working, that enjoy working together, doing such a good job. I'm here to discuss briefly, because I only have a couple of minutes, the changes that are being contemplated that were expressed by our Borough Planner last week as relates to changing in our residential zoning. And I'm really talking from the perspective, not as a businessperson, if you will, because frankly, the, my agenda in terms of building in this town is really, believe it or not, just to build the most beautiful house that I can possibly build, regardless of whether or not there's a financial gain at the end. It's a real passion of mine. I call it, you know, passion of love, if you will. And it was also really nice to see, they didn't recognize me, but two of the young people that were here today, Kings Row, that I built their house, they live on Garfield, and it was, it's really, it's really special to see families, you know, grow up in Madison and come together, and they come from, you know, out of town, and it's really very, very rewarding. I guess, when I heard about the changes, I'm concerned because I want Madison, frankly, to maintain its competitive edge. I'm glad to hear that things are going so well, and we have such a small increase in taxes this year. I certainly pay quite a bit, and I also take credit for building some fairly large and expensive homes that have generated a lot of tax revenue over the years. Certainly understand that they also, they also create services, but I will tell you that from experience, many of the people that remain are empty nesters, and it's, they have no children in the school district, like myself, and they're still continuing to stay in their lovely home for as long as they possibly can while not burdening the town, if you will. But I, just getting back to this, and then I'll go. I'm just concerned that the Planner hasn't provided the council with as much detail, I think, as necessary. I spent a lot of time preparing what I think would be akin to a Planner's Report. Past experience, I was, I'm a CPA, I'm a real estate consultant, I worked for a very large firm, actually grew the firm, we sold it to FTI, which is a global consulting firm, and I ran their valuation, their real estate, their home building, and so I know a little bit about what I'm talking about. I just think that, I just think that she hasn't provided you with enough, and I would ask you to please look at the report that I prepared and take it as such, because I do think there's some important things in there before this ordinance is fully considered. I'm concerned because it creates a substantial amount of non-conforming homes. As a matter of fact, the majority of the council members would be living in a home that's non-conforming if what is being presented is actually passed. Mayor, you're safe, just wanted to let you know that, but I think that's something to be said. And also, the two recent subdivisions, which had extreme Planning Board input, all of those homes, whether it be Kings Road or my subdivision on Shumpike, all those homes would be non-conforming to the new law. And that's a problem, because we had consensus from the Planning Board on those two subdivisions. So thank you very much for hearing me, and we'll see where we go.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Welcome, Jessie.
Jessie Esposito, Community Place in Madison. Couple of things I just want to go through, because, as I said, I wasn't so worried about, you know, the signage right now, because I have the street pretty good cleaned up. But I am still having some issues with, I just don't understand why the businesses in town can park their cars there all day long with no issue. I don't understand why housing can park cars there and leave them there for 10 days at a time without moving them. Yeah, they call in for overnight parking, but you know what? There's got to be a limit. This is just insane, that they could just park anytime they want, all day, all night, and nothing is being done. I'm sure if any one of you lived at that address, this would not exist, because I don't think any of you would want to deal with it all the time on a 24-hour basis. I live there, I love living there, but I just, I cannot, I just can't understand the rules that, you know, these people break constantly, and nobody says anything, nobody can do anything. I can't get, I can't call law enforcement anymore, I can't call anybody to take care of anything. And it's sad. I hate seeing it, and I hate having to deal with it all the time. I think that something seriously needs to be done. Either no parking on the one side and limited parking on the other side, but these businesses should be parking in the town lots where they belong and not parking on Community Place all over the place. I just don't understand why it can't be done. And that's, you know, I live there, the noise level, the car door slamming, everything is echoed in that cove right there, everything. The dogs barking, everything. I can't, I can't tell you how miserable it is to be woken up at 4:30 in the morning because the dogs are barking outside, because they didn't bring their dog in. It's just too exhausting. And I really hope this council can please get together and do something about Community Place. It's at an exhausting level now, with the vehicles, with the businesses parking there. There's five business cars there now. It's just insane. The kids can't park there because the businesses are parked in their spots. The people who live can't get in and out of their driveways. I can't get in and out of my driveway because, it's a Title 39. People park at the very end of my driveway, and I can't get my truck in and out. It's not fair. It's not right, and I'm exhausted with it. And I'm begging this council to please, please get together and take care of this street. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie. Sorry, I have to keep coming back.
You know what? It's okay with me to keep coming back. I just hate to be a burden to you guys all the time. Thank you for listening.
Yep, thank you. I know we've touched on this last time, the progress on the, of creating the, making Community Place an official street of Madison.
Yes, we've engaged council, from Matt's office, Sal Alfieri Esquire has the materials and is preparing the application.
And again...
It's not been scheduled for a vote yet.
So that goes to Planning Board and then...
I'm not sure if it's Planning Board or Board of...
Because that's, has to pull that out of the lot, right?
It is. My partner Sal's working on it right now.
Okay, so, yep, so it is a, you know, as we've learned, those that sit at the table here and elsewhere in government, it is frustrating sometimes that government moves slowly, but we are, we are moving. And, yep. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Monday, May 14th, 2018. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 25-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $50,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Hartley Dodge Memorial Underground Storage Tank Site Remediation Committee.
Mayor, I'll move Ordinance 25-2018.
I will second it.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ordinance 26-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 195 of the Borough Code entitled Land Development.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 26-2018.
I'll second.
I have, yes, Pat and, or Austria since you moved, and then Pat.
What, could I introduce it first? Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
So I'm the liaison from the council for the Planning Board with the mayor, and these changes that we're talking about, well, first of all, we talked about a great change, and that was eliminated after discussion with the council. We brought it back to the Planning Board, and that sentence was eliminated from this. So it's basically de-supplemental bulk and design regulations. And when the Planning Board was looking at this and why it approved it is because the master plan calls for us to maintain the residential character of our neighborhoods. And, you know, often we are met with, there are too many mansions in Madison, you know, why can't the houses fit the lot? And so we were, you know, given that challenge of how do we make, how do we balance the right as the homeowner to utilize their property and protect the residential character of the neighborhood as stated in the master plan. So we came up with these changes based on the cases that we've seen recently regarding particularly R3 and R4 zone. So we chose to make some changes. We also added another possibility for front-loading garages, that if your front porch is flush, goes across the property, then your garage can be flush with it. And so we thought that was a good compromise. I think that Steve McCann has made some good points. I think we can introduce this, but I think we should bring back any of the concerns that the council might have tonight and what Steve gave us, and have the Planning Board discuss it thoroughly, and if, in the final reading, you're not satisfied, then you, you know, you vote what you feel is right. But I do think we should start the process, because this has been long on the books, it's been discussed a lot, not only by the council member, but the Planning Board, that we needed to fix some of the bulk and design regulations. that we needed to fix some of the bulk and design regulations so that we can maintain our neighborhoods like how we would like to see them be maintained.
Pat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I mean, first, I appreciate the work that the planning board has been doing and I agree that, you know, we do want to address some of these issues, but as I expressed at the last meeting, I had some concerns and I continue to have some concerns. But first, I want to start with a couple of things. First, the last part of this where it says, add note R, where it says at the very end, C195, 32D for additional setback height and design requirements. I believe that should be 32E. There was, I think, a typo in one of the things we got. There were two Ds. The new information is E. The second is, we got this this afternoon, I'm sorry, we got this late this morning. I spent a good part of the afternoon going through the Borough Code trying to just be certain of what was changing. Going forward, I greatly appreciate if we're going to get this, that somebody got a copy of the portion of the Borough Code that's going to be changed and we got a red line version so we could clearly see what was being added, what was being deleted, what was being changed. It would make life a lot easier. I also appreciate the fact that Susan clarified E4 where it says it's now multiple family homes being built. So that's clearly a new development as opposed to just existing homes. But again, my concern goes back to the R3 and 4 districts. I live in one of those areas. At the time, I thought about my neighborhood. Over the weekend, I drove around to a few other of the neighborhoods. And frankly, the changes that we're making would make about half the homes that are currently in that district not conforming to the current, what would be the current law. Which would mean that if you wanted to build the same house in that spot, if you wanted to make modifications like I did in 2000, rather, where I moved my garage sideways, you would not be allowed to do it without getting a variance. And I think that that's a burden to put on people. That's not fair. Both the people who are going to need to get the variance, the zoning board, which is going to end up hearing a lot more cases, and people who do have other business in front of the zoning board that are going to get pushed back because they're hearing additional cases, I don't think they need to. If we want to address the issue of McMansions, I don't think this is the right approach to it. I think we should hit the problem and not the symptom. And I think this is really just addressing the symptoms. So, that's my feedback. I will still vote no on introducing this because I want the planning board to be clear that I don't agree with everything that's currently here. Thank you.
Maureen?
Okay, so I live in one of those nonconforming homes. And I live on Albright Circle. And I'm very, very concerned because Albright was a development back in the 40s and all those houses had features and characteristics that were germane to that neighborhood. Recently, we're having turnover on Albright Circle. And older senior citizens are selling their home. And they're being renovated or torn down. And houses that do not fit the neighborhood are being put up. And I'm worried, since I'm going to stay in the house because I got a variance from the zoning board to put an addition on my home that made it possible for me to stay in that house. I'm worried that I'm going to be the last man standing. So, I'm going to vote yes for this because I think we need to take back control of our neighborhoods.
Thank you. The problem we've identified, that this is meant to solve, is certainly not a new problem and it's not just a Madison issue. It's an issue that's been addressed in many communities, in many towns, and they've gone at it in different ways. And I would just ask that, as part of the discussion next time we talk about this ordinance, that we have some information as to what other proposals have been implemented and what's worked and what the track record's been. Because at this point, I'm sympathetic to the objective, but I'm not certain that these are the right ways to accomplish it. They may well be. And I don't rule that out. I'm favorably disposed toward this. But I would feel better if we had some more objective information about what's worked and what has not worked.
Carmella?
Yeah. You know, we talk about nonconforming houses in Madison. I think that practically, most houses in the old neighborhoods are nonconforming. I certainly live in a nonconforming house and when I wanted to put a very small addition on, I came for a variance. And it was justifiable and I didn't have any problems with it. I think this ordinance, you know, actually, just introducing it has given us the opportunity to really talk about what we like, take into consideration, I'm going to read this, and Ostry and I are going to sit down and we're going to talk about this. Mr. McCann, I appreciate you doing that. So, but this is, this is what we do. You know, we introduce something like this and then we start pulling apart each one of those things. I'd like to see this ordinance introduced so that we could do the work that's absolutely necessary. And if it's not correct, then we'll keep on working on it and that, you know, the second, the May 14th may not show that we're going to be doing a final vote on it. But I think introduction of ordinances gives us, as council people, an opportunity to really learn and discuss and compromise with some of this. So, I'll be voting yes on this, the introduction, because I believe that this is the way that we have to start talking about an important issue right now.
First of all, I have a general overall comment. I'm concerned about the sense of urgency to do this right now. I really don't understand why it might not be able to be folded into the redo of the master plan, which is imminent, number one. And two, I have a personal issue with one of the issues, one of the sightings out here in R1 and R2 saying you can't have street-facing garages. I live on a cul-de-sac. There were at least 40, at least 40 cul-de-sacs in Madison. Every single house on my cul-de-sac has a front-facing garage. And, by the way, there's one being built on Fairview Avenue that has a front-facing garage. So, I'd just like to have this rethought and reconsidered in its entirety along the lines that Mr. McCann suggested. I will read your report too. I'll try and find somebody on the council that I can work with to review that, but, because I don't know nearly enough as much as I should know. But that's the way I feel right now. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call.
Actually, I did want to ask the question John asked, which is, and really, it's for Ostry or for you? Could you guys sit on the planning board? Why aren't we folding this into the master plan?
The master plan's different than an ordinance.
No, I understand the difference, but when you do the master plan, would you not be able to accomplish the same thing?
No. You have to have, you have to have, the master plan-
Guides the ordinances.
...the vision of the town. And then, if, if the master plan, like if you change something about what we perceive to be the historic nature of downtown or something, then you would, you know, say the planning board would then maybe do a tweak of the ordinances for the historic downtown to change it, to reflect some new language that occurred in the master plan. But, this is not, this is not something that just came out, you know, two weeks ago. We've been working on this for like over a year to try to address, and I don't think it's appropriate for me to discuss particular cases and particular houses that we've approved or not approved here. I mean, I don't want to, but I know which ones they are. The cases that we've heard in the planning board, we've had a sense of frustration because some of the designs are just not in keeping with, as Maureen said, with the character of the neighborhood that we would like to preserve. We would like to preserve ranches in Madison. There are a lot of baby boomers who are going to want those ranches. And pictures that I think you sent me of houses, those are, those are easily, I mean, when you have gray changes and topography that are clearly a hardship, it's, it's a yes from the zoning board. Very easy yes from the zoning board. So, I think Carmella's right. You should introduce it so you can keep the dialogue going. You're not passing it because it has to go back to the planning board. And you've all asked many questions that the planning board must answer to your satisfaction and come back with these answers. But, you know, if it dies here tonight, then we go back and then we do it all over again. Let's see if we can tweak this and get it done and we'll give you, you know, what Ben said, he needs some alternatives to what other towns do.
So, okay. Just one question on something you said about introducing it and then allowing us to work on it. If we don't introduce it, does that preclude us from working on it?
It'll go back to, you know, square one and they'll still, you can still work on it. It could come back the way it is. We end up retiring the number. It dragged, it will lengthen the process, but it doesn't kill the process. And what I was going to comment on from, you know, obviously from my time serving on the planning board and, you know, the master plan, as Ostry stated, you know, gives overall guidance. And when you pass zoning ordinances, it is, goes to the planning board, is it consistent with the master plan? And so that's, that's one of the tests and that's what needs to be done. The ordinances are introduced for a couple of reasons over time. One is, again, Ostry pointed out how reviewing cases that are heard and sometimes it is, for example, a few years ago, people were coming forward for variances related to front porches, not a setback. And what, basically, the zoning at the time was discouraging front porches, which is a great feature that breaks up a look of a house and creates a neighborhood. And so, the planning board changed the zoning related to front porches and how it has looked in the whole setback calculation. So those are examples. And for those of us that have gotten door-to-door for decades, it seems, what are you going to do about the character of Madison? And, you know, we had a couple of years ago, led by a former planning board member, a process of what can we do? And so, this is a tool on how to deal with it and how to preserve the character of Madison. Is it the sharpest tool? Well, time will tell, but it is a tool and if it needs to be sharpened more as we go forward, the planning board would do it. But I think that is the reason why it's here right now and it helps preserve what we have in Madison. And it's a good reminder that it doesn't say that you'll never see a front-loaded garage in R1, R2. If you had a neighborhood of nothing but front-loaded garages in a neighborhood, you have a good argument to say, this is consistent. Just as neighborhoods such as Keep Street where virtually every house does not meet the setback, you have a good argument to say, I need a variance because I'm just matching up the neighborhood with prevailing setback. And so it is a good process, but as things change over, it gives the, a dialogue that you can do the right house for Madison. Those are my comments, even though I don't get to vote, probably.
And it's my understanding that if we introduce this ordinance tonight, we don't necessarily have to vote on it at our next meeting.
It would be, it would be a hearing and it would either be withdrawn, tabled, or voted.
Okay.
So it literally has to appear on our agenda at the next meeting? If you, what's that? Yeah, so if there's a vote tonight, it has to appear in your next agenda. You have to, Liz has to advertise for the paper so there can be a hearing. And if you make any substantial revisions to it, then you have to go back and start the whole process over. So you can do a ministerial change, typographical layer, things like that, but you can't do anything of major magnitude. That doesn't mean, remember, ordinances are laws that can be amended in the future as well. So if you pass this ordinance and you're dissatisfied with it, or you're getting complaints, or the planning board comes back and says, what we intended is not really working, you guys can re, you know, go through the process again and introduce amendments to that ordinance. But again, this is a fairly involved process because it involves both us and the planning board. And what you're really saying is that the planning board only really has one meeting to have a hearing, discuss some of the input we have plus other people. If they make any changes, then it'll either not be coming back to us or it'll be coming back to us for reintroduction. But either way- So right now, you're sending it to the planning board for review, correct? Yeah. So if the planning board comes back and makes substantial changes to it, the way the process works is the planning board looks at the ordinance to make sure it's in conformance with the master plan. That's their purview. You'll present the ordinance to them, they'll review it. If they and their planners and lawyers believe it is in compliance with the master plan, they'll bring it back to you. If there's recommended changes from them and you guys are acceptable, you would then introduce it and then have a hearing. So then, they're not really hearing it for anything other than it's compliance with the master plan? Well, they look at the compliance with the master plan and, remember, the master plan is the document that says, this is how we want Madison to be developed. So they'll look at this ordinance to make sure it's in compliance with the master plan and your other ordinances that are out there. And if they have comments, it'll come back to you and then you'll have an introduction, first reading and then ultimately a second reading. They come back with substantial changes, you can't pass it. You go about, you go through the process. So that the public has the right to review it and be heard.
Ostry?
I feel like there are questions that can be answered with regard to what's before you now that may, may give you some confidence that the planning board is presenting the best set of changes for our residential zones. R3, R4 are really tough zones here. They, most, I mean, it's practically every lot is nonconforming. And those are the cases that the zoning board hears mostly. It's easier to put a house at this point on an R1, R2. But, I mean, I think, I think the planning board is saying, look, this is what we think is best, but you've raised issues, let me get the answers to the issues and see if, you know, it satisfies your, the questions you've raised. I mean, we, we've brought it up to the council now because we think it's the best way to deal with the concerns that we've heard over time regarding the residential zones.
Yeah. I mean, I still agree with Ben, which is, I don't think we really heard, and again, you guys have worked on this for a year, we've only heard about it for a couple of weeks. So for us, you know, we're kind of consuming all this, but we really didn't hear why this was the best choice, what other choices there were. And just from my point of view, I don't think it's really addressing the issue that we're saying is the problem. It's kind of tangentially coming at it to give a body of people the opportunity to possibly work down to what they would like, but using this sort of one mechanism, which I don't quite get why that is the best way to go about it. So, I still have serious reservations about this.
Okay.
All right. You're not passing it tonight. This is an introduction to start the process. But I mean, I mean, to the point where I don't understand why we're following this path right now. I really would have preferred a dialogue with the zoning, with the planning board about, well, what else did you look at? Why is this the right way to go?
I'm going to get those answers for you, Pat.
All right. Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Rowe?
No.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes, with reservations.
Serious. There's no answers.
Yes, no answer, but that's all right.
You can say no reservation.
Okay. Ordinance 27-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 185-32 of the Borough Code to include time limit restrictions for parking on John Avenue.
Mayor, I move ordinance 27-2018.
Second?
A council discussion. And just as, this is an area, we do have the four-hour townwide time limit. This is one of the blocks that has businesses in the area that can very easily park for four hours, take a lunch break, move the car a little bit and park in another part of the block. So we have found that this is, the four-hour limit is not working in this neighborhood, so hence the two-hour.
so hence the two-hour.
I guess one question on those lines, I mean, we keep doing these things. Have we ever considered what they do in other states, possibly other cities, which is creating parking zones where you have to be a resident, where you have a, I guess, like a temporary placard you can give to somebody if they need to park on your street?
We have not considered that, but it certainly is one of the, you know, it, what we, certainly when things like this are passed, we sometimes hear that the concern is, but what about the residents that live there? So it's certainly something that could be brought up to if that becomes an issue.
My in-laws live in Santa Monica, California, and they get, I think, two passes to park on the street, one like that's permanent for them and one that they can give to a visitor, so if I have a rental car and I need to park there. And this way, the, the town knows. And during the, the, some parts of the day, it's a free-fire zone, but at other times of the day, it's not. You have to have a placard in your window otherwise you can't park there.
Certainly something that could be considered. Okay. Any other comments? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Rowe? Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolution R 33 through R 150, 2018.
I'll second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled?
I, I just have to abstain from three. So should I do that at the time of my vote, or do you want to do now?
Yep. Your vote, let's see.
Okay.
Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Abstain from R 142, 148, 149, and yes to the rest.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
We have the current fund at $3,935,401.38. General Capital Fund, $7,017.83. Electric Operating Fund, $496,054.31. Electric Capital Fund, $18,152. Order Operating Funds, $49,173.51. The Water Capital Fund, $32,266.33. The Trust, $31,195.43. The total is $4,569,263.79.
Mr. Mayor, I move the vouchers.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Rowe? Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I'd like to make the following appointment requesting council confirmation. This is the newly created position from the ordinance that was passed tonight for the Open Space Recreation Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. Nancy Bruce, 26 Laurel Way, Shade Tree Management Board Representative, to a new annual term through December 31st, 2018.
Mr. Remove the appointment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
She talked about it. She talked about it. No. She said to me, you need to be involved in this local stuff, Ostrey. Thanks, sir. You didn't have a line, so you're not the easiest. I'm glad you're interested in the planning process. Yeah, it's really important.